School committee meeting to order. Yes? Anybody here, we've already took here the executive session. Item number three in the agenda, anyone here for public participation? Yep, you come up to the mic. You can give your full name, sir, and the town you're here in.
My name's Brian Miller from Free Town, Mass. I have a problem with the timeframe that we were given first off to choose one of the three options for our kids. And I definitely have a problem with the fact that we're being told that our child cannot re-enter the school until January if one of the options we do choose turns out to not be as good as we thought it would be, or isn't working at all, or God forbid something happens with some member of the family and we're unable to now be home all the time to take care of this homeschooling situation. Our situation changes monthly sometimes, you know, in life, so I mean, who knows what to commit something like that is impossible with the way things are going right now. It almost seems like it would have been smarter to just go fully remote and then if everything was good, we then, you know, slowly go back into school. I'm saying this now, letting everybody know now, that if in October, November, as time goes on, and my kid isn't doing well at home anymore, you know, she will, I will be doing whatever I need to do to get her back enrolled into the school itself physically before January, because no one's going to tell me unfortunately what's right for my child other than me, you know, and my wife, of course, too. But this is something we've discussed and I made my way down here to make sure that it was known now so that in October, there's no questions, or November, or whenever this all things, oh, where's this guy coming from? I'm letting you know now, I'm sure there's other parents out there, too, that are going to be wondering this, too, they probably don't understand the full ramifications of signing on for six months, you know, for something that could change in the next month or two. So I guess I don't know if this is a response thing like at the other meetings, I don't know if you guys respond to what I ask, or...
Well, typically, we hear your feedback, we totally understand. Every fine family dynamic is different. I think the administration understands that things change in every situation. I would just make sure that you're in constant communication with the administration if things have changed. When I read that forum, it was suggested that you do the full term in that case, it wasn't a mandate or anything to that effect, but I would say that your direct communication would be with Dr. Kalinsky and Mr. Maderas, you know, at your earliest convenience outside of this meeting for any personal questions that you guys may have as a family.
I did speak with Mr. Maderas this morning.
Okay.
And he did make it clear that it seemed, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you did make it sound like it was, that's it, you pick that and you're done. Like you have to commit to that, no matter what. So that's why I made sure I came down to ask these questions, that if there was, I mean, I don't know, maybe I misunderstood what he was saying to me, but it sounded like if you do pick TECA, let's say, that your child is in TECA far until January. And again, it may work out great, but I don't want to, I want to cover all the bases beforehand, knowing that if, again, in October it doesn't work, I mean, a week into it, it doesn't work, and we need to get her back into school, or it turns out that you have a vaccine and we're all cured by October, November, we want to get her back in school. And I'm not saying it might happen, I'm just saying, our God forbid something happens to my wife or I, or my parents, or, you know, they're educators and they're old and they live at home in the side of the house of ours, and they're going to be involved in helping teach her, you know, if something happens to them, you know, just, and there's other people, I'm sure they don't even have that situation, you know, they're even more, they're very thin line, you know, for it to break for them.
Mr. Maderas?
I just want to confirm, first of all, I did speak to Mr. Miller, just to confirm and support the position and the dialogue that transpired today, and just for clarification for the group, but certainly for the community that's watching. He consistently presented what he's presenting here tonight to you. I just want to clarify without labor, and I know we're going to talk a little about reopening of schools. What I said to Mr. Miller is that we are looking for a commitment through the first semester if you're in the third option. Remember, there are three options to remote learning. The first option is outside, they're actually withdrawing their children. The second option is homeschooling, which is a day-to-day situation that can change at any time. And the third option, which is the one I was specifically speaking to him, first, I want to clarify something he said tonight, just to make sure the community hears, the students are still district students in that option.
Correct.
So they do not need to re-enroll, they are already enrolled, it's just the format by which they're, or the platform by which they're being educated, whether it be remote and/or back in person. And that was the conversation. So what he presented tonight is consistent with our brief conversation today. I recognize it certainly on the minds of many, we're going to talk a little about remote learning a little bit later, but I just want to clarify that he was specifically speaking to the in-district option, where students remain our district students. TECA right now is a virtual school that is not accepting any registration or new students at this time. The only option that families have for that is because we secured licenses through TECA previous to this, which are pretty hotly contested, I will say, at this time from the state perspective, but again, I don't want to labor it.
I think it's a fair statement that we understand that family dynamics are going to change over the next couple of months, and those will have to be handled on a case-by-case basis, depending upon the circumstances.
And it was really behind the educational value, behind the disruption of both the school and TECA, right? The idea that students going, families potentially going back and forth can't happen for any of the families, because there's an influence and impact educationally that it has beyond just the individual family decision.
I mean, we have a, we have one, she's an only child, she's going into third grade. She hasn't had really any social contact with any kids really since March, and it was, it's not an easy decision to make to have my kid stay home longer. We debated over whether or not socially, you know, if she needs the social aspect of it, worth it, but in the end, you know, waiting it out another few months is fine with us in the end, you know, but it's, you know, like again, you know, if we start this up and she starts getting on FaceTime with her friends and stuff, and they're talking about being in school, and she's a kid, she's eight years old, she's like, start crying and stuff, and want to be back with her friends. And that's something that we would then, at that point, realize that it is weighing very heavy on her, and if she can go back to school, that would be something that would be great to have as well. That's the kind of, you know, this isn't a situation we all want to be in, and I understand the financial aspect of it, is that the town is paying for these seats, and in two months from now, if we leave, they're not getting paid prorated back, I'm assuming. So, I mean, so, well, I appreciate the fact that there will be some sort of, from what it sounds like, some sort of case-by-case basis when it comes down to this, coming back to school if we want to, from the temporary homeschooling.
Mr. Miller, thank you very much for your feedback.
Thank you.
Any other public participation? Sorry, it's difficult to see further back, so if you come up to the mic, that'd be great. There's one on each side, too, right? Oh, no, sorry, there's one in the front.
Shannon Stone, Lakeville. I just had a question about what the...
Can you go right up to the mic, it's difficult to hear you.
I just had a question as to if you could give us more information as to what the remote learning or the off-week of the hybrid model will look like as far as learning for students. I feel like we don't have enough information about what that model will look like in our schools to make a decision as to what is best educationally for our children.
So, great question, that is going to be on the topic for us to discuss on the agenda this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for public participation? Seeing none, I'll move on to item number four, acceptance of minutes for August 5th.
Sorry, I'll John Richardi. I would just like to maybe additionally reiterate, I think a lot of parents have that same concern, and I know it's on the agenda this evening, but I would ask the school committee to take every, every recommendation possible, even going back maybe and reviewing the recommendation you've made for the hybrid learning, if indeed the school district does not resolve the outstanding issues that many parents have, maybe even move to a full in-person model, if you guys would even consider that as a motion. That's all, thank you.
Seeing no more movement, I'll move on to item four, acceptance of minutes, August 5th. I want to change a motion. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Item number five, presentation to the school committee, Mr. Maderas.
Yes, it is my privilege, my right here to introduce to the community, certainly not to the school committee, the newest member of the leadership team for the Free Town, Lakeville Regional School District, our new director of finance, Carol Lees. I'd say new to the community per se, but as a parent, certainly an active community member, she's not new to the community, but certainly welcome to the school district. And I'll turn it back to the chair, I don't know, Carol, if you'd like to say a few words in your first official position?
Absolutely, thank you, I'm very happy to be here and to serve the community, the school committee, and to be part of the administration team, and I look forward to all my future endeavors with the school district. Thank you.
Welcome. Throw it right to the fire in your first night.
In addition to fashion, the next two agenda items are hers.
Well, I was going to give her a little reprieve, and if you're okay with this, Mr. Maderas, I'd like to sort of bring up the reopening of schools as the focal point, and so that way we can just start to concentrate on that, so we'll skip over six A and B and go drive into six C.
So I'd be happy to do so. So I provided the school committee myriad of documents to support many of the topics that the committee shared through the chair relative to some questions I think that are of interest to individual members, but also obviously to the community as a whole, and certainly taking advantage of the public forum here tonight. I thought I won't walk through those documents, they were really done to supply some backup information in relation to my last two superintendent's corners, which referenced remote learning, which I'll speak to in just a moment, transportation, the commissioners, the commissioner of ed's information relative to desktop and several things that are happening statewide. I know that the committee, I provided once again, per request of this committee, the most recent data, this is as of today, so the dashboard information at your place is actually the most recent data relative to COVID for both the towns of Free Town and Lakeville. Both numbers are, again, continue to remain relatively low, actually, Lakeville went up slightly, but their numbers are still incredibly low, they had to go up because they were zero, so they went up slightly. If you look at their positivity rate for Lakeville, for example, you are still at a 0.78% positivity rate in the last 14 days, and Free Town's actually went down to 1.16, and I provided that information as backup data. Per request, that's weekly information that Mr. Senkowitz shared, and I've been sharing it with the entire board. So the committee asked multiple questions, and Mr. Owen, in a sense, helped kind of phrase those questions into different kind of buckets, for lack of a better description. The first was about the contract and kind of where we're at relative to negotiations, which I referenced, and I think we're well on our way with the association. Not sure if the president's here, I think she was going to be, and she is in attendance at this end. Renee Vitale, we've had a real cooperative, as I shared with you in executive session, quite candidly, we've had a couple of excellent sessions, and we hope to have this wrapped up this week relative to where we need to be. I'm obviously not going to breach any other details. Were any attendants, you'll know you'll be being reached out to by the chair of the subcommittee, Will Senkowitz and myself, to hopefully wrap some things up. But school committee had questions in relation to teacher staffing, so I'll kind of capture that, because I think it's important, it does kind of fall into staffing as it relates. So one of the, one of the issues, obviously, with the COVID situation is you're dealing with in our organization, over 400 and some employees and individuals who felt that they could not come back to work under these circumstances. Without breaching confidentiality, letters went out to different groups of individuals today with my approval. We had 26 requests from different employees, some of which have rescinded, some of which were really not requests at all, they were simply potential notices that there may be complications based on their work environment. We ultimately went through that with the leadership team and made some determination, and again, I can't go into all the details relative to, obviously, personal requests, but we obviously adhered to state legal requirements and laws, worked cooperatively with the association and with my administrative team. So when you consider the numbers, that's what, less than 6% of our organization from an employee perspective, because that doesn't just take into account teachers, paraprofessionals, and others, office staff. We do have eight staff members that will be potentially teaching remotely, in a remote capacity, in relation to that, and we've worked out some details in relation to how that will look and what that will look like at the various five schools. But overall, I have to say, I'm very pleased at the cooperation of the association as it relates to negotiations, as it relates to moving forward and getting all of our staff back, which is, they're projected to come back Monday, the 31st, and I know Pat's going to speak a little bit to that, but also to be prepared for our kids coming back on the 15th. So, again, Steve, if I may, as the chair, I'm going to try to capture multiple questions in kind of a broad, and specific and broad, I can come back to any of these areas when we get to that point, but I'll kind of jump. So that really addresses, and certainly the MOA that was, that you reviewed earlier tonight, answered some of the other questions behind the scenes as it relates to the potential disruption with the schools, which we feel we've adequately met those needs moving forward. The other, so there was a bulk of questions relative to curriculum instruction, I think it was referenced in the public participation. We've already made some adjustments in the elementary plans, which are on the website, if you haven't looked at the website recently, we've tweaked that slightly, those new, those elementary plans now reflect the required hours in the remote learning models. We also cleaned them up a little bit in relation to the content behind it. What I will say, and I know it's pressing right now for community members, which is that the hybrid model, not necessarily in-person piece, but where are we at with remote learning? And kind of the detail behind that remote learning, which is still three weeks away, I keep reminding people, I know that everybody is anxious for information as a superintendent, we're pressing the commissioner. But the reality is that in a hybrid model, half of the students are in-person, and I don't think many of the questions are related to the in-person instruction, it's more that what's happening at home and based on their limited experience, which is last spring, quite frankly. So the principals are working closely with their building teams to be sure that, as I referenced early, and some people have quoted me on it with their emails and phone calls to me, it's kind of a 2.0, and the fact that we're going to have much more of a blended learning model, a more synchronized learning to that second week, but also the week that in fact, students are in-person, and I feel very comfortable that in fact, at all levels, elementary, middle school, the intermediate school, and high school, you're going to see that reflected. Keep in mind, those plans were needed to be submitted in July, so if you look at some of those dates, the detail behind what lessons would look like in September and October, just from my perspective, aren't realistic. And I'm being perfectly candid and honest, as an educator of 31 years, the idea behind the fact that we still have two weeks of professional development with two high-quality remote learning, blended learning experts, EdTech and also the Highlander Institute, and the fact that our teachers are going to be engaged, and have already been engaged in PD as it relates to having a different model that blends synchronized learning, asynchronous learning, application skills, a variety of things that I know in some instances have been described as vague, but aren't vague. I mean, those same questions aren't being asked of in-person instruction, because that's a more traditional setting, right? People don't ask what happens in the classroom. In fact, most parents, in fact, don't know what's happening in the classroom unless the child comes home and speaks to them and gives their kind of perspective, or the teacher carries out something. So I do recognize the urgency, and I'm a parent, first and foremost, quite frankly, but as superintendent of schools, the hybrid model, as I've said to everybody, from my perspective, unless you have some family circumstances, health circumstances that prevent you, is the number one priority and should be the choice of parents, because it blends the in-person instruction with a remote learning model that is going to be, now, keep in mind, for those of you that are choosing the full remote, that we orchestrated, by the way, the TECA requirement, just to go back to something in the community, and Pat texted me, Pat Kalinsky texted me, TECA's requirement was one year. We were able to negotiate the agreement down to a semester, so we would even in fact have a viable option for our kids. So that's part of the timeframe semester piece, just to speak to that. But the idea that if you look at what TECA does, and TECA's been doing this well for 16 to 17 years, I'll just give you an example, they have two Zoom classes per week. So the idea that remote learning requires live or recorded lessons every day by every class member or every teacher or team just isn't realistic, and it's not the model that really is the state model as it relates to the Greenfield School, but also TECA. And so it has to be that balance of a group lesson, of individual instruction, of student-centered work. And now, I will recognize, and Pat can speak to this a little bit as well, from a curriculum perspective, it is easier for older children to handle the remote aspect. There is no doubt about that. High school students being able to be more self-directed as it relates to tuning in, hopefully. Middle school students, I'm not so sure, I was a middle school principal for 10 years with some of the apathy and effort, but clearly the age and the maturity should allow them to be a little bit more focused. Elementary is certainly a different circumstance, and probably the greatest challenges in the springtime relative to those younger children. But what I'm saying to you is that the remote learning piece, with all the plans, if people expected a 60-page, five-document to tell, to tell you what your second-grade teacher, what that classroom was going to look like in October, from my perspective, isn't realistic. I understand the urgency and concern, the timeframe that we came up against, once we secured TECA, is when the survey came out. The week before, we had a transportation survey. I don't think anyone in the Commonwealth, any superintendent, principal, likes the timeline. But I have to tell you, I have not seen educators work harder than they're working this summer. It is unbelievable, the work that's being done by people. And I speak to teachers, I speak to parents, whether it be texts or emails daily, I share that with them. I will not turn off my computer until I've made every phone call and email to every parent. I didn't say they liked every decision or answer, but to expect that principals, when students haven't even had their teachers assigned yet in August, to have a detailed remote learning plan laid out for them when they're still training to be take place, I know you won't want to hear this, but it's not realistic, and it's not in place in other places, and so we secured an option, which I heard loud and clear from the association relative to this, we can come back to the remote learning. We have a survey right now, I can tell you, as of 2 o'clock, 170 responses to the, to the remote learning options, 170. That's inclusive of all three options, right? The first one, where the student actually withdraws and registers with Greenfield School, potentially on one of the virtual schools, they actually leave the district. Homeschooling has always been an option that exists, and we have those numbers. I actually think that number's a little bit higher than what people submitted on the survey. They already had a pre-approved plan, I don't think families felt that they needed to check off option two, it was already understood that we approved them. And then the last piece, which was referenced here, which is this idea of full remote learning and what that looks like. It's a core bundle of academic classes, it's four subjects, it's math, English, language arts, science, and social studies, and it is staffed by TECA staff, which are licensed teachers. We spoke to the superintendent slash principal on Thursday to finalize all our details, and once we did that, we pulled the survey out. So we feel, we feel we have a robust option for those families that simply are not prepared to send their children back to school in the hybrid model, and yet I strongly encourage, and parents that have spoken to me on the phone or through email, no. I typically start off by saying, if you're asking me as a parent or superintendent of schools, and I don't know your personal or family circumstances, and respect that, I would strongly encourage some in-person instruction. And again, not dodging or going around the question, but the idea that, that parents in third grade, for example, are going to know exactly what remote learning looks like on that second week, if they're in that first cohort, when we haven't done everything we need to do leading up to that, is not realistic. Now, if they're balancing that on whether they should return to school, if whether they should choose option three, or the hybrid, I don't even think it's a close competition. The fact that you would negate half of the time being in-person over a full-remote model, in my opinion, is not educationally sound. I didn't say that families don't have the right to choose to keep their kids because there's a safety issue or health issue, or they're not prepared and comfortable. I fully respect that as a parent and superintendent. But the idea that we're going to have smaller groups of students having in-person instruction, and then some synchronized learning, and if you're looking for me to answer the next question, which is can you define synchronized learning, how many minutes and hours, we could stay here for a long time, you're not getting that information from me tonight in relation to that, and it's not withheld information, it's a work in progress. I can tell you that our models are better today than what you see on the website and what's ultimately going to be delivered. And how do I know that? Because the association members that I spoke to, the principals that I spoke to, that are all part of the building teams, are saying that these are evolving and are moving forward every day, and they're genuinely excited about some additional training to in fact incorporate more strategies and methods into what they're doing. I'll hit upon a few of the others, then we'll come back to remote.
Let me just, I think many would agree that having a detailed plan of what we're going to do on October 7th, 8th, and 9th is unrealistic. But a lot of parents and a lot of members of the board here have a concern that we keep hearing that what was going to happen in the fall is the 2.0 version of the spring. But unfortunately, all we have to look at is a schedule that very much mirrors what was in the spring, and I think that's where there's a lot of concern and a lot of frustration. Notwithstanding that, we understand this is a work in progress here. Is there any details as far as what is going to differentiate between a remote week in the spring versus a remote week in our hybrid model? What are some supports that they're going to do? Is there any teacher interaction, right? And I think that's where the community is missing, and not looking for exact level of detail, but at least they...
But I gave you those examples, synchronized learning, classes tuning in, and then having, having students both at home and in the classroom be engaged, whether it be Zoom or through Google meets, that's the definition of synchronized learning, right? Having those individuals. I shared that multiple times. I can't tell you it's going to be three times or two times, those things are being worked out, and I endowed at each of the levels, but it will be an integral part. And I don't know if I could say it was going to be an integral part in April and May last year, because we reacted, like everybody did, to the pandemic and the shutdown. We've had now time to reflect on what our good practice is, so much so that other than safety and wellness and, and health, which is what our kickoff is for the concern of the families and students and staff, we're spending 10 days detailed, which I've provided to you some of the platforms. So I would respectfully say, we have shared with you some of the details, we just haven't broken it down by lesson plans and/or hours and timeframe. The plan in July that was submitted, that was required to be submitted, had to give some general broad template in relation to kind of what it would look like. It's not going to look like what happened in the springtime, but, but, but the idea that, and for example, class lists aren't in place. Every child typically knew what teacher they had by now. Well, this is not a typical year. We had to wait for these surveys to come out to find out who's remote, and so I now have principals rolling out, I have multiple parents in my office who remind me that in addition to your notices that you're sending out, now the principals are starting to send out. So I get the sense that parents want information, but are also overwhelmed by the well, by the number of pages and information that principals are just starting to roll out. I have to be honest with you, right? They're just starting to roll out. Three weeks before, because they've allowed district things to happen, to talk about the early dismissal, the arrival for students, the mask breaks, the lunches, the, you know, all those things that parents and kids want to know and families need to know about what it's going to look like, and also one component is remote. But I, again, would, I can have Pat, you know, chime in from a curriculum perspective, because she's working with the principals on this, it's a top priority for us.
A few questions of the board, start with Mr. Senkowitz.
Yeah, just a comment. I think there's a reason, too, guys, we have to keep everything in focus here about why the commissioner pushed the start back, start dying back by a couple of weeks, right? Time is crucial here, and it goes so against how teachers and schools operate, right? Teachers and schools operate in a very, very specific way, they want to have their weeks laid out, they want to have programs in place, they want to... Teachers and schools operate in in a very, very specific way, they wanna have their weeks laid out, they wanna have programs in place, they wanna have their schedules. Trust me, nobody wants this information more than than the people working, uh leadership and the teachers themselves. Just how they operate, they're they're creatures of habit, that's that's what they want. Um but I think superintendent, I couldn't agree with you more that a lot of that work i- is is ongoing. And and we are up against the clock and we are up against the time. Um I'm gonna just publicly say that I I trust this this leadership team with what I've heard to this point. Um that the pro- the 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 um product that's delivered in the fall is going to be heads and shoulders. Above what we were struggling to put in place in the spring. I'll say it again, that the spring was survival mode. Teachers went home for the weekend, they came back and the entire system of education that they knew was changed, okay? We have to, we have to have to have to be confident and I truly believe. And I know there are different options out there for parents and I understand that parents have to do what's best for their kids and I totally fully support that. I personally believe, having gone through the system, that there aren't teachers in this world better equipped to take care of our kids. Than the teachers we have in our district and the leadership members we have in our district. I trust our principals, I trust this leadership team. Um I've looked at the professional development that they have ready to roll out the teachers and I and I'm excited, I wish I could attend it. Right? Because it's going to take their game to the next level. So I hear you loud and clear, I know that peoples, that we're on edge and I understand that we want answers. Those answers are going to come, they're just not going to come as fast enough as we want them to. So that so that's it for now, thank you.
I'm wondering if perhaps some of the problem here is the words that we're using. Um blended learning, perhaps Pat can describe what blended learning is to the community because it is a brand new. Um that new word that we haven't heard, synchronized learning, another one. And the question that I get over and over and over again, and I'm not sure if you can answer it yet, is. Will my teacher meet with my student, with my child at all during the remote week? That question comes up over and over and over again, perhaps it's too early to know.
We can we can quickly answer that, the answer is yes to that, there's no doubt about that.
So the teacher will be checking in during the remote week?
I I I would, I I think actually checking in gives the impression that it's not gonna be a significant impact. And I would I would say it's it's gonna go beyond checking in. Um keep in mind, and and Mrs. Senkowicz said this, Mrs. Matt. Our students never got to see their teachers again last year. So a hybrid model allows face to face, whether it be two days or a week, there's never any connection. So the connection of the instruction in person and then the carryover to those services, I heard Liz say in their special education piece today. In in the Zoom, in the question and answer, how the connection of related services will tie into the in person. And that's so true across all our kids, right, that tie in. But so I I can, I can, as much as I can't re- answer every detail, to share with you that there'll be a connection. Those things are being worked out now, whether they be introductory lessons, whether they be social, whether they be academic. And if you'd have, and I know you did, if you looked at your packet and looked at the PD as Will referenced. Much of what we're gonna discuss is how we fine tune and make that a better place, I know you had.
I don't think that the the community understands that though, perhaps we do.
Yeah.
And I think we need to hear from Pat.
I know you referenced last time, just wanna speak to a little bit, at on at as high a level as you can without, you know, going too much overwhelming people.
So the blended learning model is basically going to dovetail with a hybrid learning model. So what we've created for PD will provide technical assistance and support to teachers for the first week. The second week will be Highlander giving the teachers pedagogical strategies. For how to teach using this blended model and blended just means that some of it is in person and some of it is online. And and how do they make that work so that it's a smooth transition? So one of the um days that we're having PD will be. A two, how to create a two week learning cycle when one week is in and one week is out. So they'll give them strategies on how to do that and then they'll get the tools on how to do that. How do you use Screencastify, how do you create interactive lessons? So that when the kids are not in in class in front of them, the teachers still have an ability to connect with the kids. At a minimum of two lessons of two days a week of providing that kind of interaction between the kids. How to provide feedback back and forth between the teachers and the kids. They'll learn which technical support and which vehicles they can use to get that done. So that when the kids are home working on a lesson, that they have access to the teachers, that there are um tech support times, that there are um. Office hours, if you will, where the kids can email or try to connect with the teacher. Um there's a a vehicle through Google where the teachers. Can create a Google account using their texts, their um cell phones. But their cellphone number won't come up, it's it's all through Google. And now the kids can either text their teacher or or the teacher can call them. And get some information that way and communicate with them that way. There are all kinds of tools that the teachers are going to be exposed to in the next ten days. That like like Mr. Senkowicz said, when we come back, this is gonna look very, very different than it did in the spring. When they had no opportunity for any of this and I still think that in the spring. Did a tremendous job of trying to keep learning alive in this system. Knowing that on March twelfth, we left school and left our computers here and then we're told on the thirteenth that you're done. I I will definitely go into more detail, I can break down what will be. Shared with the teachers on each day from each organization, the Highlander. Which is a well known um for blended learning models and hybrid learning models and creating systems and structures within schools. That become embedded and then I just delivered. Whether we're whether we're remote, hybrid, or even when we come back, these are all very, very good educational models.
Sure, I I would just say, I I think we had a timeline as you originally, the last meeting. Uh we voted to support your recommendation on the feasibility study to bring us back into a hybrid model. So I I think to to the questions, I I think are to misrepresent the questions and and not in a bad way. And I appreciate all you're doing as just parents simply wanting lessons, I think it goes beyond that. I think parents are looking for meaningful engagement or structured learning time. And I personally would like to hear the rationale behind the one week on, one week off. Um I think it's that amount of time that is creating some anxiety with parents, including myself as a parent. That there's a number of days without, you know, you see many districts doing the hybrid within the week. Um and you're going a a serious amount of time, especially in the lower elementary school all the way up. And the only thing that's been presented at this point is schedules that say complete posted assignments with little effort to. To kind of engage with meaningful uh engagement or opportunities to be with teachers virtually. So I'd like to hear the rationale, was that a recommendation of the task force, was that your recommendation?
Well, first of all, it's a recommendation to the Commissioner of Education, who who specifically said that the hu- the model that he would. Encourage and recommend and early on in the process was one week on, one week off. So Commissioner Riley made that statement multiple times publicly about a model that he would endorse and support from a state perspective. There are multiple hybrid models that are out there, I and I and I I can certainly recognize those. Those models that wanna have students in person two days a week, which is pretty common, cuz that's what they're doing, they're going in person and everybody's remote Wednesday. Kind of regooping and then and two more days remote. So and so in those models, our students are going into in in person twice, two times in one week. And and I I don't see how that is a better model than. And I recognize if you look at the calendar, one week on, one week off is not accurate as you look into November and December and some of those other months, we split those weeks up. There's a safety component built into that, there certainly is a gap as it relates to the timeframe. If you look at the cons for what a one week on, one week off, one of those is is making sure you address that and bridge that gap in the length of time. As it relates to to those students, um and and I would acknowledge that. But it allows for some more detailed um lessons to be taught. And not simply introductory things in one or two days and then those kids go home and apply them. That's my opinion, I think when we when we drill down into what we're trying to do in Freetown Lakeville and and Pat should take a ton of credit for. Securing those two experts and consultants to come in because it's her background and connection that's bringing them here. We're taking the A plus road to what I think are some other school districts are doing, which are. In my opinion glorified remote learning options with a a a yeah, a little spraying in of in person one or two days. And then they go home and apply that piece. I think we're gonna have much more detailed focused instruction when you combine it with our training with some synchronized learning, that would be the case. Um I I certainly, I listen, there are districts, you know, my, our our staff members wanted wanted full remote. Um seventy percent of them, you saw the survey, they wanted full remote and all those students we'd have synchronized, right, they would all be home. Um and and certainly, I I couldn't support that. So I felt first and foremost, our communities deserve some, our kids deserve some sort of in person, which then defines hybrid, right? So you asked me the question, why are we at hybrid, we're at hybrid and I recommended hybrid because. One, all of the data for our community support it and and making sure students face to face have some instruction is there. The idea and the and the criticism or and or positives relative to the the hybrid models are multiple, right? If you look at the commissioner's website today, his most recent piece, he kinda went through and they and they give some pros and cons to each of those models and kinda where they stand. So I I'm I'm certainly prepared in response, I felt it was a a a more consistent model. It hybrid model is a disruptive model for families and yet we've tried to minimize that and allow for some scheduling over the course of a week. It, you know, minimizing, ideally, we'd have all the students back, right, and those family members that are working, we wouldn't have to deal with this. But we're not there yet from a safety and health perspective. In addition, I do think we create a much more safer environment with one week on. It's not only one week on, but when you include the weekend, it's seven days between cohorts. And allowing our building to be cleaned and disinfected and also potentially the separation between cohorts, I mean, that's part of it as well. So I I'm, you know, again, maybe those other communities that have chosen a more, a quicker approach to turning it around. Have much more staff and are much more prepared. But when I look at the PPE orders and what's being expected and required, I think I think the model that we've chosen and that I recommended early on. It makes the most sense for our community.
On Will, I know that our our administrative team has been working hard, putting in a lot of time. You have to make a leap leap of faith, I think that these directives are gonna be passed on to our faculty. And that's where the rubber meets the road and I I have trust in our faculty, we we've got a great group, just just ask the community members what they think of our teachers. And I think that with the direction that they get, they're gonna do a great job. And if they don't, if it reverts to what we had in the end of the year, last year, we're gonna hear about it and the superintendent's gonna hear about it and he'll know very quickly. Whether it's a repeat of last year or not. And I don't think it will be a repeat, but if it is, we'll know about it and we can make adjustments.
Senkowicz.
Yeah, Bob, but I think we have to give them a chance too, right? Absolutely, um so I think. And and I'm just gonna toss this question out to you, Pat, because I think a lot of the hesitation around that remote. Model is around that synchronous time, right? And that's something that fell short in in the spring and and I'm not gonna rehash about why. So can you talk about the importance of that synchronous time, the benefits of it? Um and how it's different from that asynchronous time? So can you can you speak to maybe the? The opportunities to collaborate to for kids to maybe have a more realistic um classroom experience within the remote model, but during that synchronous time? Cuz I think, I'm hoping, um that'll help obviously bridge shed some light on on what we're planning on doing. And and maybe try to kind of ease some some tension here.
So so that was one of the things we brought up when we met with the Highlander and the consulting people. We shared with them what happened in the spring, we shared with them the results of the parent surveys and some of the comments that the parents had made. Um that was one of the reasons why, so day one is structures and systems. So it's asynchronous Google classroom, how does that work? Also blended models that work in a hybrid model, the flex model, choice boards, systems for continual connection. And that's where we get into the planning for a two week cycle. So what's happening in the classroom, what's happening at home, that's just day one of the PD. Now, they will have already had a week's worth of PD from Ed Tech teacher that is showing. Teachers how to use all the technological instructional. Programs that we've gotten for them, we've secured some stuff and also the stuff that's available on Google and the stuff that they'll take us through. So we, so day two is lesson planning and they have um templates for the teachers to use. There's three templates and they can choose which ones they want. But again, they take teachers through what are they doing during the week that they have them? Which like Mr. Madira said, can be very deep, robust learning. And now if they can have them apply some of that on their own during the during the week of remote. And still an ability to touch back in with them, touchstone, using. The other thing we're doing is creating um all hands on deck kind of model. So all our parents are being trained in this too. They are not separated out, they will have these instructional strategies also, they will become full partners in this learning community. The reading specialists, the special educators, everybody is going to be on board. So that when the kids are learning remotely, there are a number of professionals that can that they can reach out to. Um lessons that they will be given, being able to see their teacher and interact with their teacher in a variety of manners.
Um so on top of everything that Pat shared, this fall, we'll actually have teachers that are that are designed. And specifically focused on providing remote learning opportunities, we didn't have that last year.
Right.
So teachers who will be at home and able to provide additional support by grade level and by individuals in te- in classrooms. Um at at various levels that exist. Um again, which is is gonna be a phenomenal um situation on top of the training, sorry, Pat.
We have structures for student engagement, culture building, um academic delivery in a hybrid model. These things are all gonna be explicitly taught to teachers and it's not just those ten days. So we've also contracted with them for a full year of what professional development is gonna look like. This is gonna be ongoing throughout the year, we're front loading a lot of stuff for the first ten days. Because we know teachers need to know, need to be able to plan and need to need to develop. Um a plan and a and something that's more robust at least for the first month. And then in November, when we have another full day of PD, now they can come back having learned, used this model, learned it. And now start to get deeper into it, bring some questions that they have. And now, again, working with Highlander slash out, okay, what are the next steps, what else do you need to do now? They'll also start working with our curriculum leaders so that we have boots on the ground, we have people embedded in each building. That now has more specific. Professional development in this model, so that now the teachers have somebody local they can go to. And that will help us grow this out so that eventually. After a couple of years, Highlander will fade out, we'll have our own team of people who can keep this work going. And we'll just bring Highlander or Ed Tech in specifically for anything that comes up that we need them for. But we're trying to be purposeful in how we grow this model out of instruction. And it and it won't depend now on whether we're full remote, we're hybrid or in class. It's going to be a very, very good model of delivery, we've made a commitment to one on one Chromebooks. And using a hybrid blended learning model is going to bring in all that use of technology. Very, very well.
For that, actually, I think I heard from you something I was kinda hoping to hear and that I don't want those contexts, I don't want that context. Uh for how we can make this work for families. Um it also is going to entail sort of a different way of thinking for teachers and not just because they're on Zoom or whatever it is, but. That's right. I'm I'm going to the thing, little things like memories from my past, running out at eleven o'clock, buying poster board cuz somebody had a project to do. You know, those things, you're gonna have to plan appropriately, not everybody has those materials on hand, these teachers are gonna have to be conscientious. About what they assign, when they assign and what it involves. And we didn't do that in the spring and it left a lot of families very uncomfortable or there's suggestions. That came online about things they could do, but they didn't have the stuff and they couldn't go get it, we have to be very cognizant of that. The other thing is the meals, so they're here for a week, they get the meals, we need to make sure. That if there's a student out there or a family out there that needs our support, we have a plan for. our support, we have a plan for that as well. I will not hear of kids going hungry. That will just not work, especially with all this work that we're doing right now to make this work. Um, and finally, um, um, any materials they need, but the safety. Um, kids are wearing masks in high school. They could look like Zorro or they could look like Joe Student or Jane Student. We need to be very careful about that, about who's walking through the doors when we're on site. And I know it was a big question of mine. I want, when we're talking about PD and everything else, I want to make sure that we're looking at the safety of our children. I'm not really worried about elementary school kids trying to look like somebody else, but older children are amused by that and so are people with ill intentions.
Before we put it back to Mr. Madera to answer some of these other questions outside of the, the curriculum piece, any other questions for our guests?
I mean, we had a gentleman talk to a member phone earlier and ask about the fact that he would prefer to have all 100% in-person. And I don't think that there's anyone sitting here at this table that doesn't agree. I've heard from a number of community members over the last two weeks. The Governor Baker came out and said, if you're in the white district, then you should all go back. And I think we all should say, but Governor Baker didn't tell the rest of the story, that we can go back, but we can't go back with our busting situation. And maybe you could explain that a little bit more to the community so they understand that yes, we can go back with, with social distancing and, and all of our PPEs, but...
So the data that Governor Baker referenced, clearly we fall into a category on shaded a white that, that, that data would provide some form of in-person, in fact, full in-person. What, what is the, the, the fine print that wasn't necessarily referenced in the timeframe perspective, I'm not saying intentionally, were there other limitations and restrictions that make it unsafe, uh, and unhealthy? For example, the space in your buildings and the, the ability to have all 2,800 students transported to and from school, be socially distanced, um, in classrooms, to have 24, 20 students in a classroom is, is not feasible relative to the current guidelines as it relates, um, to six feet, which is what we're adhering to. Now the state, if you recall, said, well, three feet's okay. Um, and yet as we see day to day, it seems like the feet and the percentages are, are actually expanding in relation to the risks. So, so it goes, so the reality is we would all love to see our kids in person. I, Mrs. Baron, I couldn't agree more. I think that, that clearly that's the case. But, but I am not prepared to say, um, that it is the safest model right now relative to the, to our students for logistical reasons relative to transportation, but also for safety and health reasons. Pat referenced it, I wish she had gone before me and said, purposeful, that would be the answer I, that I would have said to our model to Mr. Sylvia, which is that I think the model that we've chosen, which is the one week on, um, model or the larger period of time is much more purposeful than, than other districts that have chosen a smaller slivered model, um, to accommodate, um, getting students back in, but at a much less of, of in-person contact. I can speak, I, I'll hit the other topics that Jean referenced, meals and other things.
In particular, the safety one.
Yeah. Do you want me to jump into some of the others?
Yes, please.
So I, I'm, let me see if, I'm going to do it in the order of the, of the piece, but I'll jump around a little bit. Let me talk to, um, lunches and recess and those types of things that have come up. So first of all, meals, Jean, they should not worry. She knows that I, that I helped promote with Freetown, getting a, access outside through the United Way to, to those communities and she was instrumental in helping that. So meal, meals and food service will be coming out as we get into September in relation to what options are available for those students that are home. We will have a grab and go available as we did in the summertime and we did that all summer long in relation to those kids. So those families that are not in session, because obviously if they're in person, we can provide and continue to provide what we've always provided for kids. I, I believe what Jean was referencing is those families, that second cohort that is in his home, still has that opportunity. We're going to set up a safe, a, a safe pickup and go, uh, lunch situation like we did. Uh, the director, uh, of, of food service has already talked about that and we'll be rolling that out. We've held back on some of that information, parents, because we're trying to get the big picture piece, the transportation, the remote learning, the model option out. Now you're going to see more and more of the food service rollout. So certainly masks are going to be required. We're recommending them at all grade levels, not just grades two and up. And actually that's starting to expand a little bit too. We recognize there's some limitations. I heard the special education, um, meeting this morning, talk about, this afternoon, I should say, this morning, talk about the fact that we're going to have to build those in inherently and also create some outdoor space, opportunities where kids won't have to have masks on. Absolutely. We can't expect a, a six and a half hour day to happen and kids and, and adults for that matter to have masks. And so we'll have those built in. We've added one additional lunch recess monitor at each of the elementary schools to provide some additional supervision as it relates. We're also putting a few more staff members in the morning and afternoon as we, as we address, uh, supervision. We're looking at volunteers, we're looking at substitutes. So we have a myriad of, and then that kind of rolls into the, the mask compliance, but safety issues. It is, it is interesting, we should all note, that for years, we talked about closing up our schools, not letting anybody in. And what is the conversation now with COVID? Open your doors, keep your windows open and, and do, don't have all the kids come in, kind of have them spread. Absolutely contradictory to the, the safety piece. We all know why, I mean, the safe, the health piece being the case, but we're going to be, have to even be more diligent about the doors remaining locked, uh, about access to, to, to windows and entrances, about checking IDs in relation to masks. It's going to be critical. Keep in mind though, our schools have a procedure in place that they must go through one door, they must check in at the main office and we have cameras and added security. So in those instances, that has to happen. Now, if we're going outside more, which is going to happen, our kids are going to be outside supervised by staff and we're going to create environments that are healthier and safer with fresh air. We're going to have to balance that with those safeties and issues to be sure that in fact, especially where you have more families transporting children, for example, so there's more vehicles. I've already reached out to the police chief and we've talked about added support at the start of the school year relative to that. And they've been right on board, literally about how we can help out with some visibility and traffic flow. So, so security's not going to be lost in this process because that in fact comes under safety, health and wellness as well. We've got to be sure, in fact, we're doing everything in our powers and that if we need to tighten up some procedures or policies, we do so relative to doors being locked and entrances and things happening. Um, and that, and that's across the board. It's our two satellite elementary schools, it's our three campus schools here. Um, a couple of the topics, Steve, I'm jumping around a little bit, but I'll come back. Uh, they're not in any particular order, but they kind of clumped extracurricular activities and what's happening there. Um, the fall sports and athletics, I can tell you the Massasoit League principals have already determined that there'll be no fall sports for middle school programs and we're part of the Massasoit League. So the principals themselves across all of the schools in the Massasoit League and we're part of that have chosen to not participate in fall sports. Uh, it doesn't mean there, there can't be intramurals and physical education and wellness within the guidelines. Middle schools have already done that. I can tell you right now, hint or preview, that hopefully by September 1st, the South Coast Conference will be making some determination on fall sports as well. Right now, we know that there's been some, some, um, release of guidance and direction. Again, coming from a group and I'm not being critical, but the MIA and super tense are part of that piece that have said, we think you, we encourage you to have sports and participate in activities, but we're not going to have fall championships and tournaments. Those should be conference decisions and or school decisions. When you look at the demographics in the map and the transportation of our children outside of the cohorts, they're suggesting that full remote schools that are not comfortable enough to send the kids to school should be allowing their children to come after school to participate in sports and then travel to a, a potentially higher risk red zone area. I respectfully, as superintendent, don't support that in relation. And anybody who has, who has been around, means long enough to know, whether it be my own anecdotal stories or not, know I'm typically the one on the sidelines and at these games. So I fully support that. It's going to be a challenge for our chorus kids, our music, fine and performing arts kids in relation to band. But, but, so I know people didn't want to hear this, but in my opinion, there'll be some larger decision made by the South Coast, uh, as it relates. I can tell you, school committees have taken formal action in those full remotes because the state has basically said, if you're full remote, you have to vote on athletics and they, and they voted yes, which is mind-boggling to me, that you would not support kids coming back to school.
Just a qualifying question. The middle school sports, they chose not to have them and not to move them to the floating period, correct?
Middle school sports, meaning competition outside of our school or district, will not take place in the fall. At any of the Massasoit schools. It doesn't mean you can't have activities related to athletics and or sporting activities, but they need to be within the restrictions of Freetown Lake.
Totally understand that, but one option is either it's canceling outright or they're moving it to the fall floating, which is the February to April.
Yeah, the middle school doesn't have the option.
They don't have that option.
That's correct. They, they don't fall within that. I, I, I misunderstood your question.
Okay.
Schools that, that in fact put pause on the fall, you know, at the high school level that MIA and that's not a middle school, can choose to then have those activities later in the year, potentially in that fourth season.
Understood, thank you.
If that's your point, we, and we certainly could consider that. So again, I'm not saying a vote has, or action has been taken, but it is my understanding and my, speaking to my colleagues, the superintendents who have had dialogue with athletic directors and principals, within the week, a determination or a recommendation will be made relative to South Coast Conference. Some, some leagues throughout the Commonwealth have already made that determination and have chosen to err on the side of caution as it relates. You didn't ask me my recommendation. I think you can read between the lines where I think we, we should be putting all of our efforts right now in relation to school, which is seeing our kids in person and, and at the same time, trying to give as much opportunity as we can in a safe way. But that's, that's, I know that, and that question came about for sports and athletics. That was not, by the way, Mr. Higgins, Mr. Olivera Middle School, I want to be clear, right? That was all of the league making a determination that there will not be competition. It was not an individual school decision. Um, traffic flow, protocols, procedures, maps, I've seen them all from the schools. I can tell you, I've seen them all and they're going to be coming out shortly to parents so they can start planning properly for September 15th, which is the first day, 16th, 17th and 18th. But we're not sending them out three weeks so we can repeat them again and overwhelm staff. We're going to slowly be getting that out. Some are sending them out with, I've seen maps in relation, what I will share with you, similar to what Mr. Clark said. Trust my leadership teams when I tell you the detail behind the maps, um, the parking that's been set up, the traffic flow, they are safe, they are consistent with our bell schedules and times and parents and community members will be getting them, I would say in the next week, the 10 days, where at August 26th, as we go into next week, which starts September 1st on Tuesday and then into Labor Day, you'll, in weeks prior to school, you'll have that information. Obviously the times, start times and end times are already up there, so you know, plan, plans can start to be made. But the detail behind, you know, the logistics, those things are happening, um, at all the levels and will be shared. There was a whole portion of special education, I'll defer to, to Liz on that, that she did a phenomenal job today in a Q and A. I know some of you, Mr. Owen, I know Mrs., Mrs. Fox also participated in addressing IEP services, remote related services on the remote week. She made, I, I, I'll take, I'll paraphrase her statement, correct me Liz, but basically we're going to make every effort during that in-person portion to try to have those related services incorporated into, into their instruction, mask breaks and things like that. Uh, the definition of high needs, uh, IEPs, she, she really captured it. It is, it was LakeCam thankfully did this for us. They streamed it and recorded it. So please, if you have a special education question, much of it, and, and certainly I'm sure Mr. Owen and Mrs. Fox can attest to it, will, were addressed in that hour. And those that were not, we will expand and, and, and capture them as well. Um, as far as staffing goes, I know there's some questions. I, I kind of referenced the extra lunch recess monitor at each of the elementary level. By the way, they pay, they pay minimum wage, those individuals, 1275, just curiously. So add in one position to what had been three or four positions in light of the, the, the extension of where kids have to have lunch, um, which is a myriad of cafeteria and in classrooms, depending upon the level and, and space availability at our schools. We're in the process of trying to secure some part-time custodians to help with the, the 22 or 24 staff members that met today on training. I was in this auditorium today, basically saying, no offense to my outstanding, our outstanding teachers, but I, this is what I said to the facilities people today. I said, we wouldn't be opening school without you guys, right? And it's absolutely true. Without these facilities being prepared August 31st, um, a- and for, for our staff and then on September 15th, the work and the hours and the disruption in their personal and professional life, hey, that go unnoticed is unbelievable. I said personally and thank you professionally from the bottom of my heart relative to that work. But we don't feel that the current staff we have, unless we tweak some schedules and add some support to that, once we get the kids back, can maintain what we need to. So we're looking at some part-time, we're also looking at a temp agency and we secured an initial draft and I'll be sharing that with Kara in relation to potentially having a, especially for the first month or two, to be sure that we're getting the cleaning done that needs to get done at night. Cause we may have to front-load a few people because typically we have a skeletal crew during the day, but the need to disinfect surfaces and so forth becomes so much greater. PPE supplies are in. I can tell you that the Teachers Association, phenomenal features, that someone of our period, I apologize, who was referenced the fact that we have outstanding teachers. If I was going to have someone teach my kids, it would be no offense to TECA, Greenfield or any of those other talented, I'll take our teachers any day. And, and, and there's no doubt about their number one priority in addition to the instruction. And I know we talked a lot about remote learning and what that looks like for parents, was about safety, safety, health, well-being and risks. That, those were the concerns, not about coming back. They're thrilled to see the kids come back and we're so excited to see them back. We have a remote session lined up with our staff. They're all coming back in the building, but I can tell you that we're looking at additional staff there. I've kind of highlighted a little bit of that. Someone asked the question about the extra buses that come, that's going to come from CARES funding. So the additional buses will come right directly from town, uh, supported monies from the selectmen in both Lakeville, which has to go through the county, that unique piece, but directly from Freetown. And we've already shared that information. So that's not, that's not budget items that will come out of this budget, it will come out of CARES funding in addition to remote learning packages that we're, that we've secured with TECA. Um, where our students remain in our district, but we have seats available to provide them. That platform will also come out of some, some CARES, uh, money and town money that's available to us from both Freetown and Lakeville. They have been very supportive and so just from a budget perspective, um, I know Kara is going to speak to where we, where we landed with FY20, great news, and where we're going with 21, I, I, I believe we're in a, in a decent position. So I know I'm somewhat long-winded. I tried to capture what are four or five pages of, of questions that came from the board members. Um, and Steve, you did a phenomenal job just kind of, kind of piecing them into health and safety and, and buildings and I can go into more details, I can stop, I can answer questions. But I, I, I can tell you folks that we're ready for our staff on the 31st. I'm walking through each of my buildings tomorrow, uh, tomorrow's Thursday, on Friday, uh, just to do a final u- update of kind of where we're at for staff and they'll be here for two weeks. We do have some additional work relative to water bubblers and things like that before the kids come back. Because again, just think about that. So you can't have water bubblers being shared by our kids. You can have the devices where they can fill up water, but you gotta, you gotta turn off water or make them not available because of the risk. I mean, think about what our schools look like and where we're at relative, you'll see a ton of signage, um, and, and there's a lot happening. But I am, um, I'm very excited about having our staff back. We have new, new teacher, new staff orientation tomorrow in a modified remote version. All of our staff are coming back to their buildings though on Monday, the 31st at all five of our sites. Normally they're right here, the school committee's part of that. Steve, I've extended an invitation to, to the chair of the committee to, to say a few words, uh, at the start, at the kickoff of that, which will be remotely. It won't be remotely in that they're not in their buildings. And in fact, in some instances, they're going to be in lecture halls like we were in with some bigger screens and, and socially distanced and some they'll be in departments and teams and in some instances, individuals will be in their classrooms. But we're, we're real excited and keep in mind, the commissioner, I think, did a phenomenal thing for the, the Commonwealth and for families and kids. He gave us some additional time, reduced the 180 days, the 170 days and said, make good use of them. All 10 of them we chose, not all districts chose to use all 10 of them. Again, mind-boggling from my perspective, why not take advantage of every day? We actually, with the support of this committee, adopted a calendar that also built in two of the Mondays from the previous contractual days to build more time in. So we're better prepared for our kids when they come back. So I'll stop.
Well, Steve, your turn. Just as a follow-up for a future meeting, um, it's great that we have the CARES Act to deal with budget issues for this year. I'd like to see what implications that would have for future years. Um, obviously if we maintain those two buses, that's a line item in the budget that is not planned for. So I think we just need to keep that in mind. Definitely not for anything, but definitely as we start to planning of next year's budget, unfortunately that'll be here before we know it.
Yes, Stephen, you make a, a real valid point, right? That captures and covers us with what E and D potentially we have to access, but then there's certainly a, an impact moving forward. And that goes for staffing too, right? It goes for those other items and potentially, we have PP for three months. I mean, we certainly don't believe we're going to need it just for three months, right? We forecasted the three, but I think we're going to be in a situation much longer than that. That certainly has budget implications moving forward.
As much as I don't like where we're going with after-school activities, but I think we all see the writing on the wall, especially as you bring up the custodial piece, I think there's an opportunity for use of some high school students, not just in the technology help desk area, this is another area. So I'd like the district to be creative in utilizing some of those resources. We'll be looking for something to do with their time in this approach. So just something to think about as far as resources that are out there.
So it's double-edged, right? Clearly not having the kids involved in those activities, it will also give us a little more time to maintain our facilities too. And I think I'm suggesting to the superintendents, and we have 10 districts, that we use the term pause, right, on sports, whether we make a determination. Because we can look to have these activities and try not to have kids like they did in the spring lose out altogether and maybe, you know, Mr. Owen's point, look at a different time of the year when things are in a better situation. But I'd be happy to answer specific questions if I didn't hit one of your questions or items.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for pulling this together. I know this was a lot of questions out of left field related to this. We tried to organize it as best as possible, but just to thank you for pulling this together. Appreciate it. I'll open it up to you, any other questions from the board related to the questions or if there's additional questions related to reopening.
Preschool information's coming, before and after here as well. Trying to catch maybe your question, you might. So Lisa Pacheco will be directing before and after here at each of our sites. Stay tuned, folks, more and more info's coming. I know Liz Carroll and Mike Ward are doing some preschool info for families.
Mr. Sankowitz.
I've spoken enough tonight. Can you just talk, please, roughly, just about the Chapter 70 ramifications of all three options that went out for parents?
Yeah, so, yeah, no, yeah. Again, it wasn't necessarily the driving force behind making sure. I mean, I, you know, say these board, you've board multiple times, board members throughout the course of the summer were adamant about making sure that we provided a remote learning platform for our staff. But I believe your question will in relation to the three options that exist for remote learning. So the first option you lose, the cities and towns in Freetown, Lakeville would lose their Chapter 70, right? Once those students withdraw, those students would go to Greenfield and/or Teca and certainly they would become those students. They sign up, we lose that, we lose the funding relative to that. Homeschooling, we do not lose the funding, right? We do not lose that piece and certainly there's a lot of flexibility in relation to, I think, Mr. Miller's question, right? Homeschooling students are, it's approved, but they can come back in. So there's, so there's no financial implications as it relates to, I guess, a reduction. And then last but not least, what has been seen the predominant option that parents at least are exploring, other than the hybrid model where our kids stay, is another one, where our students remain residents. So they remain registered with us. It was the only way that Teca and, and I can speak to this, Teca agreed to this, right? They have a ridiculous waiting list. I spoke to one of our family members today and there were 655 or 662, forget the exact number, on the waiting list and didn't believe that. How are we going to have that same opportunity? So I walked them through what option three is, which is your student remains a district student, but it's going to be, if you choose this option, I started it by saying, no shock here, sign up for the hybrid models, what I would do, but if you choose that, so well to your point, Chapter 70 money is not lost in that third option. And those students remain with us, whether they're in the remote platform and/or in-person slash, and then we can obviously make some adjustments on commitments. I will say that you've heard a lot about no exceptions being made relative to students and cohorts and things like that. There have been a couple of circumstances that, and I said that upfront to people, that if they can provide medical and/or a health situation and there are a couple of real, real unique circumstances that we're considering. So I guess back to Mr. Miller, Mrs. Miller's statement, others that he represents, we certainly aren't, although we're making a commitment, we're certainly not going to say, and I know this board would support that, that we won't take each case individually. At the end of the day, I'd love to see all our kids come back, right? And be in-person full and/or in a hybrid model. And so that was probably more longer-winded than Mr. Sankowitz wanted. He wanted to hear about Chapter 70, but I just want to capture that piece. So the only real of the three options that have a negative impact on our funding is that first one and that's a small percentage right now.
26 requests for leave of absence. How many of those do we need to replace?
So first, I shared with you that I received 26 requests. It's not accurate to say that there are actual 26 formal requests, but I received some sort of document suggesting that they may have to take a leave. From that, several were rescinded, so I'll try to kind of lump them without breaching confidentiality. So we had ADA compliant medical health issues and we were able to put eight individuals in a remote setting and continue working for us. The vast majority of the other items, there were five or six that were basically put on hold of that. In other words, that they were either saying, I might need to, or that other factors may contribute, I'm working in this district, they haven't developed their model yet, I'm not sure where my kids are going to fall, so I needed to put you on notice. Now, again, giving credit to the union, there are groups that did not share this information. The union, early on in the process in this district, said, we'll not only work with you, we'll identify what is a reasonable timeframe. I think it was August 24th, Renee could correct me, within a one-week timeframe, we had all these numbers so we could make decisions that weren't disruptive to our kids. So we do have individuals who are out that we cannot work, that cannot work. We have to supply substitutes there. We're also being pretty creative with some of our coverage though, Sherry, to your point. So we are taking advantage and using individuals in other categories and in some instances that don't compromise our programs or services. I know you asked the exact sub, I don't have the exact count because it varies. So for example, we have to make sure that we secure a monitor for three teachers that are teaching remotely, some of our higher-end high school classes, that we couldn't afford to get a substitute in and those kids would lose out. But the teachers were willing to, in fact, in a remote fashion, provide that. So those kids will in fact have the instruction through the use of technology in a synchronized fashion, but we need to supply an individual that will oversee that classroom, facilitate that during their time. So that's some of the uniqueness. I'm trying to be a little careful relative to personnel matters and do not go too much into detail. But there was a combination of those individuals who will continue working, eight of them, a combination of individuals where we had to provide some coverage and then in some instances where we didn't have to, right? If you could, we could collapse some paraprofessionals positions because of the way the cohorts are set up, so the students weren't being serviced. So as a result, we could shift somebody over there and move them there. I would be lying to you to say that it was not disruptive. Keep in mind that, so we spat there a week, the administrators and principals, waiting to get each day, the potential that we're going to lose one of our talented people in relation to all legitimate medical concerns, health concerns, childcare concerns, all within what COVID has permitted people to do. I did not think it was abused. I supported all of the requests that came through. But in each instance, if we went through each of the schools and I don't want to do that because it's such a small community, it starts to identify individuals, it had an impact, some places less than others. And it's part of the reason why, in addition to the remote learning piece, we are holding off on class lists till this coming week. So next week, elementary teachers should be, you know, the parents will start to receive information on who their child's teacher is and then obviously, middle school and high school kids will start to get schedules and those types of things.
Mr. Clark.
Single thought the custodians say, I think these guys do a heck of a job. They're going to acquire new responsibilities, I think. And I don't want to see anybody complaining that they don't do some of the extra work without extra individuals, because they can't do extra, extra work and the work they're already doing. It'd be too overwhelming.
So everything we're doing, Bob, you're absolutely right. I share this with teachers, I share this with custodians, it has to be we, right? If we don't do this together, we can't get it done. And that goes for teachers who are talking about disinfecting classrooms in between, in between at the secondary level and how we're going to deal with desks and so forth. I think there's a collective responsibility, we all take students included, lesser extent at the elementary level where we really have created a situation where kids aren't moving quite as often, so we can take care of it later in the day. But then you've got the bathroom facility issue, you know, and.
I don't agree that you should ask students to do custodial jobs. It just increases the contacts and increases the risk. So I don't think that's a good idea, increases your liability. I don't think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
The only thing that I would ask in closing to this is, you talk about the plan for traffic and all that, but we also include that four-way stop sign in the main campus, especially with the busing, going from Grace to the middle school, to the high school and what that traffic is, I think it's going to need extra support as we go through that, so.
Yeah, and part of the adjustment at the high school and middle school and Grace, we had the three principals literally out there, addresses some of that to help that bottleneck. But let's be honest, when you look at the number that filled out the transportation, the good news is they've provided and helped us with our busing situation, with the numbers of kids we can fit on buses, but it obviously creates other issues relative to, but I looked, I caught Sherry's eye, I did, she didn't catch mine, and as bad as the campus schools are and the setup ass swamps it, on a good day is right. We've all, anybody who's been over at Lakeville, I mean, no offense, on a good day with no traffic, it's a challenge. Had a lengthy conversation with the principal. What I want to assure families though and communities is that as that stuff things roll out, you need to be, I said this to the custodians, if I can give you two words this year to start the school year, parents, students, adults, school committee members, superintendents, it's flexibility, it's patience and on top of all that, respect, right? It is, if you, if we are going to have to be patient with the start of the school year in relation to kind of what it looks like, and I said that relative to our transportation needs and everything, be flexible in that, we're going to have to make some adjustments. I think we're, I truly believe we're in a good place. I said this to a few parents, if I had my two boys and they were attending these schools, they're not, they're no longer, they're in college, well, they're not technically in college, right? We could, that's another conversation, they'd be going to school in person here in Freetown, Lakeville. And I'm fortunate that my family circumstance would permit that. So that is not intended to say that there aren't families that have legitimate, when I see the documents and you see what's being provided by families as to the rationale, you understand decisions that are being made.
And the only other thing, and I know we don't have the answer tonight, at some point, we're going to have to answer the question about how do we bridge the gap between what's offered at Teca to our curriculum, especially at the middle school, right? And at all the grade levels. I know the high school is more, a little bit more aligned, but how do we bridge that gap?
Well, not, yeah, no, that's going to be a struggle, right? They're offering a core academic bundle. And so for high school students that have a very, very, a varied schedule in relation to specialists, they should stick to the hybrid model with us because Teca is not going to be able to provide that, that level of detail relative to some of those course offerings just because of the sheer magnitude of the numbers. Elementary, same thing, there are no specialists in the Teca program, right? There are no, so there are no other, those other activities. And some parents are okay with that because of their medical health reasons. But Steve, you're absolutely right. We talked about that today with principals, that, that whole transition between the situation that, we're hopeful that all those kids that have signed up for remote for the first half of the year or sooner are coming back to us and we need to be able to blend that and be able to transition that smoothly. I think, I think we're going to see in education in general for coming, for years to come, a lot of gaps though in relation to kind of where we're at throughout the world, certainly nationally, but here as well. And we're going to have to really be careful about how we bridge those.
So we'll move on to, or back to the other items and old business and Ms. Lee's giving us a status report, but I will just briefly do that. Obviously, Ms. Lopes is not here. I think on behalf of the committee, thank her for her service the last couple of years to the district. You have some great shoes to fill, you know, so and we're looking forward to that. But I just wanted to publicly thank her for her service and that, and fortunately can be here tonight. So I'll turn that over to you for a quick update.
Perfect, thank you. So item 6A, the FY20 budget status report, you will find some information in your packet. And this was a report prepared by Ashley, but I would like to report that FY20 has been closed and you will see in your packet, there is now $1,575,187.49 in our E and D account. And although I just began my position this Monday, I was able to validate that the E and D amounts presented in this report agree to what is recorded in your finance system. Upon acceptance of the report by this committee, the next step would be for the district to work directly with our auditors and the Massachusetts Department of Revenue for the certification process of E and D, which would be completed no later than October 31st. I just wanted to state also, I know from having experience with other local governments and school districts, there is always a question surrounding how much unrestricted fund balance or E and D should we have as a district? And there's really two recommended approaches to that. The first relates to what the Government Officers Finance Association recommends on behalf of governments in general. And their recommendation is that you would maintain a fund balance of no less than two months of regular general fund operating expenditures. And that would mean a balance of approximately $6 million. However, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 16B states that if the certified balance of excess and deficiency exceeds 5% of the current year's operating budget and capital costs, the regional school committee must use that excess as a reduction in the assessment to the member communities. Therefore, for a general fund budget of approximately $40 million, the district could carry a balance as much as $2 million in E and D without needing to require a reduction to the assessment of the member communities. So tonight, we are requesting a vote to accept the ending balance presented of E and D of $1,575,187.49 and approval for the business office to perform the submission process of certification of E and D to the Massachusetts Department.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
For at least the last 30 years, we've used 5%.
And related to that, we have never come close.
Oh, no, you're wrong.
Well, in the last, I'll say, at least in the last six years, we've never come close to that. So, but I do believe through the regional finance subcommittee, we have taken our approach that we will not be taking from the E and D to offset operational items for that, which has been a practice in the past. So I'd like to get this back to this number, which is great. I don't like the fact that we had to go through a pandemic to get here, but it'd be something that we have there. So any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Passes unanimous.
Thank you.
This does require signature by the committee on this, so the book will be up here for that. FY21 budget update.
Yes, you'll see in your packet, an update to FY21 budget status report. You'll see that the revenues collected of $3 million year-to-date, approximate those anticipated when I compared it to the same timeframe as last year. You'll see Chapter 70 member town assessments that they're collected monthly. Chapter 71 collections, you'll see reported as zero, those are normally received twice a year, February and May, that's for transportation. Expenditures in the current year, $3.1 million, also approximated the prior year expenditures. The encumbrances that are noted on the report include any commitments of expenditures as well as committed salaries. There is currently $14 million year-to-date available to spend that has not yet been committed.
Any questions on the FY20? My only question is related to the assessment sheet, related to school choice, Mr. Maderas. Obviously, with everything going on, are we still meeting our numbers for school choice based upon the number that we put in the assessment sheet?
Well, no, we are a little below that number. We're certainly not encouraging more students, obviously, as we have scaled back. After looking at the exact number, we have some students that may be not returning to us and so I'll have an update at the next school committee meeting relative to them.
And honestly, that's not going to change. So even if that waits till a post-opening type thing, that's a lower priority, but something that we should look at since it is an offset to the assessment sheet.
Absolutely.
Any other questions on FY21? Seeing none, moving on to a new business, 7A staffing, we talked a little bit about the leave of absence.
Yeah, I've actually, I guess the good news, folks, is I've actually captured A, B and C already. I mean, we could, I can go through, but the staffing update, we have new hires, I'll certainly at September 9th have an updated list of each of the actual names. We're still in the process. of each of the actual names, we're still in the process of securing a few more individuals relative to the start of school.
So, the only question that I have is obviously, pre-COVID, with the budget discussion, there was some new course offerings which require some new hires, have those well been addressed?
Yeah, we're so, we're in the final stages of a couple of positions that we need to fill, but yes, we feel we're we're ready with our programs, um, and services for all at all levels.
Excellent. Um, any questions on seven A? Moving on to seven B, updated twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school calendar.
It was, I think, from our last meeting, we had to address some equity issues relative to the two cohorts, we did that right after that, and it and what it shows you is that that calendar out to, I want to say thirty-one and a half days apiece to through December. Obviously, we can look at some flexibility and hopefully we're not looking at hybrid models that far out, but obviously, we projected out through at least uh the um holiday break in in December, um, and that's been on our website and and posted, I'll be happy to answer any specific questions.
Um, the only, I'll ask the question we asked the last time, with all the professional development days up at the front of the calendar, do we still see the need for that professional development half-day in uh created beginning of October, or can we move it further along?
We've kept it as a placeholder, I think we'll have a better idea, Steve, when we start to do some of our training, I do think the idea in light of so much being new relative to this experience that front-loading it might make sense at this point, and keeping it right, we keep it right where it is, so my recommendation right now, if that's what you're asking me, is that we keep it where it is, but we certainly will have potentially one or two more opportunities to make an adjustment if we need to.
Obviously, a change for the committee, the color designation, at least the letter C represents a school committee, thank you for um those, yeah, for that. Any questions on the school calendar? And this is the one that's posted on the website, right?
That is correct.
Moving on to seven C, uh, I think we've already covered that particular case, okay? Um, any questions from the committee related to that? I think we've knocked.
I think I think those other two items were covered by Tara.
Reopening to the front, we knocked down several other ones in there, so it's great. Um, Ms. Lee's, Director Fine, any updates further than what you've already given us?
No further updates.
Great. Dr. Kablinsky.
So, we talked a little bit for professional development about um the instructional pieces that the teachers will go through, but we are going to begin our um professional development talking about health and safety. Um, our, usually our opening day speakers are somebody who is inspirational and motivational, maybe a little bit funny, gets us in the mood, times being what they are. Our opening speaker this year is Dr. Paul George, who is a Lakeville resident, he has children here, and he is going to talk to us about um COVID-related topics, in particular, um, he will describe the epidemiology, diagnosis, treatment, and prevention of COVID, he will analyze data on COVID-nineteen and children from school age through high school, he will describe methods to minimize risk to faculty, staffing, children from COVID and other infections and illnesses, and then he'll answer any questions that um faculty and staff have. And then he will be followed by Dr. Hartman, who is a psychologist, um, and she will present coping and self-care during stressful times, um, and giving people some strategies that they can use. Um, and then and then we get back into the first week of professional development, which is the instructional strategies with um ed tech teacher. And we've also built in times where the teachers can be in the buildings, working together, applying some of what they've learned, started to create lessons, and then the following week roll into the Highlander piece where they'll start getting pedagogical instruction and techniques. Um, one of the things that had come up was um the issue of privacy for students if we're doing live streaming or um those kinds of lessons, so that is something that we talked to both Highlander and ed tech teacher about. So when you, when you're showing us how we can do this and getting in touch with students, students feeling connected to our classrooms, how are we doing that so that we're minimizing any type of uh privacy issue that could be going into people's homes that really shouldn't be? I mean, most people are not privy to a classroom when we're in school, so um, so they're going to, they're going to take us through what these can look like, knowing that those are the concerns that, um, you know, people have addressed, uh, people have raised with us. Um, and the, the other, the other thing that I had talked to Highlander about too was providing a more robust parent support, so um creating some instructional videos and some help for parents, not more than five minutes, so they can have quick access to um whatever questions they have, I don't understand the model of Screencastify, I don't know what they're trying to do with Google this and that, here's how this goes, so when the presenter develops um the PD for the teachers, for us, they also create something small that parents can use, and we'll get that onto our website, um, as well as like a tech help hotline that does not have to be manned by the teachers, which was another problem last spring, was the teachers were just spread too thin. So that's something we've also talked to them about, they're going to work on getting that ready and up and running for us also. Um, and then for our online licenses, the learning licenses that we um obtained from TECA. TECA was the one, when we met with them, as Mr. Maderas had said, recommended that we ask parents to commit to a semester, a full semester. Um, they recommended that the semester start September eighth. We did tell them that our first day of school was the fifteenth, they were okay with that, but they would, if if parents were all right with it, that parent, that the kids start on September eighth and go until January twenty-fifth. Um, as far as homeschooling goes, that is not um, that is not a requirement for for parents choosing homeschooling, they can make those decisions um about when they think that they want their child to uh return back to the to the district. Um, we have core um instruction that we've bought from them, that's all they offered us was the bundles, um, the Department of Education had given us what those uh options were. Um, however, in the core courses, especially um for high school, they do include honors and AP courses um for language arts, math, social studies, and science. Um, the electives are definitely a problem. Um, but TECA can accommodate special education students. Um, we, as a district, would remain the LEA, however, they have special educators certified by Massachusetts on staff, we would, with permission from the parents, if if they're choosing a TECA model, we would upload the IEP so that they could follow it. Um, he, the superintendent indicated that the TECA teacher, the special educator, would be willing to attend IEP meetings, that they would provide progress reports for us, for the students, and they would provide any modifications or accommodations that are in the IEP. If there are supplemental services like OT, PT, speech, then the district would be required to um honor whatever is in is in the child's IEP, but the IEP does not go away, and I know that was a few questions that parents had been concerned about. Um, so, uh, in looking at, so one of the reasons why we embedded the link into the superintendent's corner was so that parents could make a more informed decision and be able to go onto the TECA site and see what courses are offered, what kind of, what does a live lesson look like, and what are some examples of lesson plans, because they had that there. Um, they provide two live lessons with a teacher per week, and then they provide open office hours where um one hour a day, where a teacher would answer questions and provide support to the student, um, and then they also offer some kind of targeted instruction for students that they notice are struggling. Um, so, so for the start date, they do recommend September eighth, but could accommodate a late, a later start date, I know that was a question for some, for some parents also. Um, so one of the things that we had talked to and contracted with Highlander and ed tech teacher for was an ongoing year of um professional development. Um, so, so in layering the professional development, part of what we will, they will provide to us is, they have a book called Pathways to Personalization, which is um basically a roadmap on how to create a blended learning model systematically in a district, so I acquired copies of that book for all of our administrators. And then Highlander will take us through a monthly book study so that we know, we have some depth to our our knowledge of of what this should look like, and then we have the curriculum leaders who are also being trained, so there's another layer of support. Um, and then they will also be coming in periodically um during our half-day PDs and our full day, our next full day PD, to continue that work. Um, and I do think that it's probably going to be pretty important that we have that half-day in October, just to keep this momentum going, only because there's just so much that we're learning right now, and we don't want to happen what happened in the spring where teachers were basically on their own. We want some opportunity where they can have access to the experts and start to um deepen their own learning and have practice with those professional strategies that they're sharing. Another thing that Highlander is going to help us with is the creation of a data plan to measure the impact of distance and hybrid learning, so that the decisions we start making moving forward are data-driven, and we, then they're purposeful, so we know what's happening. Um, they'll also provide us with um parent surveys and then analyze that data and create themes in the data, so they'll be very, they'll be very um important to us as we continue doing this and making sure we're moving in the right direction and not just winging it.
Any questions for Dr. Kablinsky?
So, help me out one more time, um, how will we support the IEP high-need students who are taking TECA that have multiple services, and would that be better for?
So, our high-need students have been invited to come back to school full-time, so I'm not.
And that is the DUCY recommendation.
But so might choose TECA, is that true?
No.
They.
Not the high, not the high needs, yeah.
Would not adequately meet their needs, we're strongly encouraging uh our model for them.
Let's say that they were a a help and safety issue with a family, with the student, and they chose TECA to stay home.
Right, and we would have to work very closely with them, so.
We have a, Liz, and if I may, without trying to preach confidentiality here and privacy, we have a couple of instances where we feel we may have potentially some high-needs uh students, and we're working to keep them within our district and provide services to those kids, so they do in fact have that option, it may not necessarily be through TECA, but um we feel we have some some support staff that might address that for those, and it's a small number, but for those families who potentially are high, high needs that um want to maintain a full remote platform. Um, again, as Pat and Liz pointed out, the state is highly encouraging those kids to be full in person, um, for obvious reasons, but there may be some health or medical reasons that 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 require, um, and so without going too much detail, we feel we do have some staff identified that will be able to address some of those needs.
So, um, to Dr. Kablinsky's point, um, related services like speech and OT for those students who would be more inclusion students who have opted for the full TECA, the district will be responsible for providing those. Occupational therapy, PT, the related service um areas.
Those those students, though, that are in really some separate programs that have some significant needs, I know that Liz and her office and and counselors and people have reached out to those families to make sure that we communicate, connect what we feel is best for them, and if they do have some specific issues that limit that piece, I know they're working through that right now.
Uh, thanks. So, there's no limit to the TECA slots, if you go through the district, if you choose that as an option?
Right, when we spoke to them, they told us that there was no limit to the licenses they could give us.
That is correct.
And then the waiting list you spoke of is if you contact them directly?
Exactly.
And then it's a recommendation to be with them through January, but the district could be flexible and and a return if students choose.
Well, at the end of the day, TECA is saying, listen, we think the best approach, and and they require their students that are registered with them to commit for a full year.
Parents to fill out a commitment form.
Yeah, so so they're going to, their expectation is half-year, I think we certainly have, could have some local discretion. At the end of the day, I think once we make the financial commitment, if we have to make some individual decisions, it'll be on us, and if we so choose to do that, to meet the need, individual needs, this is something to do that. TECA is not going to back away from their commitment relative to semester, a full year, it would be up to us, and these kids are ours, so we certainly could um attempt to make those accommodations. I mean, the concern is obviously the disruptive nature of kind of where we're at, right? I mean, if we go from a hybrid to to full remote, um, what does that mean? Are we going to have a population where we didn't commit to that, opt to to return to us at the tune of a hundred and fifty students, potentially? I mean, I think that's something the school committee needs to to keep in mind as they look at that commitment, as I know as stringent and strict it is, we've made a a pretty significant commitment to resources, and in the event, and it's not out of the realm of possibility that the hybrid turns remote, will we have a wave of individuals or or families return to us? Um, and then we bump back into hybrid, and how does that kind of work? I mean, they they were generally concerned, and Pat can speak to that, about the disruptive nature and how it's not educationally sound, but um we certainly could, we certainly could create any um local discretion that we want, but I think, you know, we need to also realize the reality of what the commitment is moving forward um for those kids and what's best for everybody.
That's fantastic.
Um, in relation to the special education piece, um, I assume if they're issuing progress reports, they'll be collecting data on individual goals?
They will.
Um, and with regard to a teacher attending an IEP meeting, is that something that will happen automatically, or the parents would request? We would request that, or a parent needs to request that?
Well, we would, because we're ultimately responsible for the IEP. And now you're the teacher.
Yeah, so we would identify who that staff members.
Teacher of record.
So, one of their teachers would be present?
Yes.
At all IEP meetings? Okay, and just um to piggyback on Sherry's question with regard to related service providers, uh, would that be done through teletherapy, or are you looking at outside providers to work with those students?
Yeah, so realistically, given, given our numbers, um, and given that we have strict orders not to, you know, make cohorts large or blend cohorts to the greatest extent possible, um, it is possible that they could be um doing a virtual um speech session from from home with our own service providers.
Okay, thank you.
PT, OT? What about physical therapy and occupational therapy?
Right, so much like the spring, again, this is going to come under the rubric of things are not going to look differently because of this, you know, situation that we are in. So we delivered um instructional uh PT and OT during the spring and summer, so I would imagine, given the numbers and we not trying to mix the cohorts, that we'd be able to do the teletherapy for the related services for those students. Still providing them access, um, and still providing them faith, it's just going to look differently than how it would be if we were not in a pandemic situation.
Any other questions? I just have one final question, has the district standardized on whether it's Zoom or Google Meet for our interaction with our students? Because the other concern is I don't, I don't see that on the professional development schedule, because I know there's a lot of questions that teachers had around that.
Um, we would prefer that they use Google Meet, we would prefer that to the degree possible, so the only problem with that is that there are large numbers, and then, and then we would go to to Zoom, the the presenters will show them how to use both, and and the capabilities of sharing documents and and being able to um provide live lessons using both of them will happen. To the degree possible, I think it's the best if we, if. To the degree possible, I think it's the best if we, if we try to stay just with Google to the degree that we can.
Is that a stipulation we're going to make with our staff or?
We did not eliminate the other option at this point.
We didn't eliminate it. That's why we're going to provide professional development for both. I mean, some people are very well-versed in how to use Zoom. Zoom has, has addressed a lot of the security issues that were prevalent in the spring. But our focus is heavily on Google, Google Meet and components of Google. And some of the interactive pieces that we've acquired via license are interactive and compatible with Google.
I, I would ask that they look into a standardization, especially with the the positives around such as Google Meet, integration with calendars or what have you, which I know is a big struggle in the spring. So given the option is, is always a challenge. So if we can standardize on one, I think that's where it needs to come from the administration on that. But we got to look at pros and cons related to it, so. Ms. Curlin?
Thank you. I included in your packet the final plans submitted after the last school committee meeting for special education. Again, just some of the deeper details. I also included family communication after the school committee meeting last, last session that we had, memorializing the hybrid model and explaining some of the things which were outlined further at today's question and answer session with the special ed community. Not, not to repeat, I know some of you were, were on earlier, so I don't want to repeat too much information. But we're resuming our special ed evaluations starting on Monday. And that is going to help us work through some of our spring work that still needs to be concluded. Just another, thank you to parents who participated in the, the virtual Q and A today and CPAC for compiling the questions and organizing them topically. And we have the next official, or the first official for the, the school year CPAC business meeting will be October 6th. More details to follow whether that will be remote, which I'm assuming it will be.
Any questions for Ms. Curlin?
I, I was in the car. Zooming from the car is never something I would recommend to anyone. Phone keeps falling off. But I, I was impressed with the, the, the full range of topics and issues you were able to cover. I do think that in the future, they're going to want more interactive, but where there was so much ground to cover today, I mean soup to nuts. I think you did a really good job covering that turf and we just want to be open to future interactive communication with these folks. Because they, they clearly were nervous, understandably so. And I think you, you shared your understanding of that concern. And we just want to keep that going for this population especially. Thanks.
Thank you.
Have you spent any time discussing about how your department may be able to support during that synchronous time when we go hybrid?
I had trouble here. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, have you, have you spent any time planning just how your department will be able to support that synchronous piece of the remote learning?
So yeah, we have, well, the two weeks leading up is, that's when the calendars are going to be developed and there's going to be more detail on what exactly the, the nuts and bolts of that will look like.
But there, there is also some intervention programs that we're looking at that, that we think in conversation will work very well for a number of populations of students, including like the kids coming back to us from a homeschooling environment or a TECA environment. So we will collaborate on vetting that and also will share purchasing it.
That's great, thank you. I'd love to hear more once, once the decision is-
Sure.
Thank you so much.
It's a well-known program, so we were, we were pretty excited to see it. So once we have a, a five minutes, we'd like to dig into that a little bit more. But, but it definitely shows promise. It's something that as a special educator myself, I was well-versed in. And it was a very effective program.
And this is maybe like an opportunity that we're having because of the situation, so that is on the bright side?
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we wanted to talk about RTI programs and intervention anyway. So a lot of this stuff is going to just dovetail together, whether we, you know, we wanted it to or not. But we will take, we take advantage of some of the opportunities that this pandemic has afforded us in the way that we are delivering instruction these days.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I apologize if you've already covered this at your meeting today. I couldn't make it in time for that. But do we have any students who are identified as high-needs students per their IEP that don't fall into one of our sub-separate programs and therefore not being invited to come back full-time?
So I guess when you look at the definition of high need, the high-needs students are going to fall into the categories that are outlined by the state. So there, there's not a, a student that's defined as high need that we are not making an offer to for full-time in-person instruction?
Regardless of whether they're in a sub-separate program or not?
Exactly, yes. And, and there are students that have nothing to do with special education who are high-needs students who are coming back full-time.
So, so without, Liz would not say that with her attorney hat, because she's going to be careful of confidentiality. We had so much so that we had an individual student who did not fall into special education send us a very polite professional email questioning the need that, I won't say he or she, needs to be in person both weeks because she was questioning how she was defined as high needs and was clarifying for us, but because she fell into one of the sub, other subcategories that's defined. So it was interesting. So as much as we're all enthusiastically ready to come back in person, not everybody necessarily was, was buying into that. Dr. Curlin responded back-
Sorry, the student had exec, excellent executive function skills. The student knew who was high need, knew the different categories and was telling Mr. Medeiras and I-
You must have made a mistake.
Exactly.
Yeah, we must have made a mistake and reclassified her incorrectly.
We didn't hear back after that.
Any other questions? Seeing that, I'll move on to subcommittee updates since we're in, in, I'll say, special summer mode for this is typically not. The only thing that I would ask, your feedback, Mr. Medeiras, at some point we'll need to convene the regional finance subcommittee. But I do believe it's a lower priority versus the reopening of schools. So you tell me, my prob, my guess is probably October would be a good timeframe. But especially with some of these line item numbers, we should have a conversation with the broader committee on that.
I think it's going to allow our new director of finance to make some reach outs, you know, to reach out to the town managers as well and as an ex results tension. I would normally agree. We normally would try to do something right before the start of the school year, but I think it makes more sense to do it early October at that point.
Any other subcommittee updates that? Okay, anything else to come before the committee? The only other thing, we do have some upcoming dates here. The other piece that I, I do want to add to this, it's not on the schedule right now, but September 9th, in light of a lot of moving pieces, we, the school committee will convene again. We will be meeting a little bit early. We'll have a 4:30 start time for a school walkthrough. And we'll identify the schools that we're going to be walking through so that we can see the setup from a safety perspective, what have you. It'll be a posted meeting so that way we can at the very least go through elementary school as well as a couple of schools here on the campus to experience that firsthand. So that'll be on the 9th for that.
By May, I think what we had talked about, and I'm in full agreement, I think it's great. It's that way, it's actually the week before our students come back. So that option would be, I know it's a real tight schedule for many of you. That will be a, a kind of an option in relation to that 4:30 start for those that can meet, make those tours. We'll outline what those schools are. And then I think we'll roll into a meeting back here at 6:30. Is that, is that the plan at this point? A reg, a regular scheduled meeting, so.
Before adjourn, I, I, to piggyback on what Mr. Medeiras said earlier, that, that the three bullet points really stuck out to me. I think it was Ben Franklin who said that there, in life, there are two things that are certain, death and taxes. I'm, I'm pretty sure with the pandemic, there's two other things that are certain. This is new to everybody and not everybody is going to like the answer, right? For me personally, this has been a 50/50 pandemic. At least 50% of the people are going to have issue and do that. But I like what you said earlier, Mr. Medeiras, that flexibility, patience, and respect are going to be key through this. I would ask that of the community. There's a lot of information that'll come forward. I, as a parent, have a lot of questions as well as we go through this. Mr. Medeiras always asks, if I'm asking as a school committee member or as a parent, but we go through that. And I think we owe those three items as Mr. Clark, Mr. Cinco has said to our teachers and staff as we go forward this. Especially as we start school, it's new to them. There's a lot of anxiety. There's a lot of frustration. There's a lot of questions. I think if we keep it to those three bullet points, I think it's going to be great. Because believe it or not, we're all teachers as adults and there is a cohort, overuse that word, there's a generation that is watching and listening to how we behave. And they are learning based upon how we behave and so we want to keep that in mind. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:38.
So moved?
I have a motion to have a second. Have a second, all in favor?
Bye.